Welcome everyone to the Halifax Board of Selectmen's Meeting for Tuesday, April 10th, 2018. As always, we are being taped by Area 58 Community Access Television available to you on your local community access television station and YouTube. Also as our tradition, we are going to begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you will join me, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now a musical number from Troy.
Sorry, I have to answer a text, sorry.
Let's start with the approval of the agenda. Has everyone had an opportunity?
Yep, almost.
We won't need to go into executive session for anything.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I've moved to approve the agenda as listed.
Can I get a hallelujah?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. I move the executive session from March 20th, 2018. Executive session, March 27th, 2018. If everybody had an opportunity to...
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. And I move to approve the following warrants and articles. Payroll warrant number 87 for $350,305.72. Vendor warrant number 88, $34,703.80. School warrant number 89 for $222,362.99. Withholding warrant number 90 for $126,170.7.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, unanimous.
And we move the vendor warrant number 91 for $115,843.48. Mobile park fee number four for $5,160.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Okay, what did I do? I would move the bills from March 28th to April 10th. My Ponton Pond Management, $28.25. Express newspaper invoice. Insurance, MIA, property and casualty incorporated, $384. Selectmen's expense account, wow, spending a lot of money on Mason, $6.54. Law account, Lawrence Mayo, for services from the month of April, $2,356.25. Law account, Michael Gilman Esquire, professional service and labor, $220. Law account for KPPC, professional services through February 28th, $240. And the last is the insurance for CNA and charity bill for Barbara Gainer, $100.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Our 7:35 was rescheduled for two weeks from now.
Okay. All right, so then we have some time to start with our...
I just had a family thing happen. I just have to step up for a quick minute. Excuse me. You guys go ahead without me.
Charlie, do you want to start with Charlie?
Sure. We had a firm called Hano East send in a letter of interest in having another marijuana facility here in Halifax. What they're proposing is a 20,000 square foot manufacturing facility and also a retail facility. This is for the recreational marijuana medical. They sent in a proposed host community agreement. They've not selected a location because they want to find out if the town's receptive to the proposal before they start consulting with various property owners, though it's sort of a chicken and egg problem because I don't know how receptive...
Oh, no, it's a good idea, yeah.
Right. The draft also includes only a 2% community impact fee where we had a 3% with four daughters. So I guess at this point my question is, and I've pointed these things out to the firm already, but they feel that they don't want to go and knock on people's doors figuratively about properties unless the town's interested. So I don't know what the board would like to do. I can set up a meeting with the firm.
Well, we're already knee deep in one. Charlie, I'm not sure if I want to get involved with another at this time, and I would be absolutely against any retail services in town. It's just my opinion.
I concur with that. I hate to use that expression. All things considered, where we don't have any particulars to begin with, and the particulars that we do have, I don't particularly find interesting. I'm not a big fan of a retail facility, and I'm not sure that I would be interested in less of a community host agreement payment than where we're already being offered.
Okay, well, I can convey that to the developer, and we'll see what happens with that. The board received a complaint about Famous Pizza, which has not opened yet down at the old Mr. Pizza in Halifax pizza shops. We had received a letter complaint from Jocelyn Lovell, who alleged that Nicholas Vivitiotis, the manager, had left his Brockton business, Goodfellas Pizza, with unpaid rent of over $100,000, unpaid vendors and employees, unpicked up trash, and overdrawn bank accounts. And she asked that the town not allow the business to open in Halifax. I consulted with town council about this. He agreed that any matters between Mr. Vivitiotis and other parties are not something the town should play a role in. For instance, if employees are unpaid, they can file claims to the appropriate state agencies. Similarly, vendors and landlords have recourse through the courts.
I totally agree. I don't see that that's our purview, you know?
Well, as far as rent or anything, you just mentioned the employees, they have recourse for that. It's also the person that if he paid rent on our own property, have recourse to that. First of all, we weren't aware of this, and I'm not sure whether it would have made a difference in opinion or not, because that's something you deal with your landlord and others.
We have a process and conditions for our licensing, and as long as that's met, any problems between a landlord and a tenant are certainly not our concern, unless it affects public safety.
Sure, yep. Mr. Cook's coming in later, so I'll skip there. Paragraph. Derek Douding was the individual who came in a couple of months ago for an registered vehicle permit. This was at the corner of Mont Ponton and Lingan Street. He had, the board had approved the permit on January 23rd. He never picked the permit up, but he came in, I think it was Monday?
Monday.
Monday, to say he no longer needs, he no longer has a vehicle and does not need the permit. He never picked it up.
Yeah, I noticed that it was gone. When was that? That was over the weekend, I saw.
Oh, okay. Earlier on the week, there was still a vehicle on there.
So I don't know whether the board wants to go through a process of charging the $25 fee. He never picked the permit up. I'm more happier basically to just close the...
Personally, I'm happy that it's gone and I don't have to deal with it myself.
I think since as much as that he didn't use it, essence, didn't use it. If it was, it was used for two or three days at the most, so a week.
So I'm going to close that file. Okay. Let's see. Linda Sluhaki has resigned from the Finance Committee effective April 1st, 2018. That's not an April Fools' joke. And so if the board would accept her resignation, we'll be down to two people. Obviously, trying to find people at this point isn't a good idea simply because we're in the midst of the town meeting season, but after we conclude town meeting, we'll have to do a little recruitment drive, I suspect. And I'm hoping we're just going to be down two people. Well, we'll be down three people since Gordon Andrews will be on one school committee or the other or both, and he won't be able to be on the Finance Committee at the same time. So we're going to need to do some recruitment.
I move that we would regret except her resignation and send a letter of thank you, you know, and hopefully any endeavors she may have, she's positive.
And come back soon.
We're working. So you want...
Do you need a motion?
Yeah, I think he moved.
Yeah, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Befication Committee met yesterday. They'd like to bring in a 10-foot, 10-cubic-yard dumpster, which is 14 feet by seven and a half by three and a half feet, brought to town hall parking lot and placed near the small dumpster during the pickup week, November 22nd to 28th. So the individuals participating in the pickup have some place to bring the trash bags because not all the pickup that I think is going to be done on that Saturday, the playing the big event.
So it's going to be over a period of time.
Right, during the week.
Well, there's plenty of room.
Yeah, I mean pushing it back to that end of the parking lot.
Have you talked to, you know, maintenance to see whether that, is there probably another dumpster being out there?
I, the only, I've not talked to Scott. I do have the concern, but it's the same concern I have with the current dumpsters, that there's always a possibility someone comes in when we're not here.
Not possibly, definitely.
Someone, someone who has not legal purpose with the stuff in there.
Or even a Halifax trash bag with that.
Right.
I don't, I don't know that we can say no. I mean, if we've got a bunch of volunteers out there willing to do the work, the least we can do is provide them some facilities to be able to dispose of.
And as much as I was the first one to start, then I have to encourage people to continue to clean up side streets. Because some of the streets with the snow and stuff look like...
Yeah, it's been a tough year, yeah.
And I'll ask the police department, you know, just to...
Keep an eye on it.
Keep an eye on it, exactly.
We do have a camera up there, too.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say that.
It's okay, yeah, we do have a camera. Let's see. Sun Connect, which was the developer of the solar field for Summit Street, which has not been built yet. They want to revise the pilot for this project, reflect what it sees as changes in the cost of building a field and revenue projections. Their draft, the new draft has been sent to the principal assessor and town council in just the last couple of days. I'm recommending that this get hold over to the 24th to get their comments. In any event, we won't be doing anything with it immediately simply because while town meeting did approve negotiations and the original pilot, it's too late to bring another article to town meeting for... I've told the firm that, but my intention is now to consult with town council and with the principal assessor and see where we want to go with this. My biggest question simply is whether the financial data they provide is accurate, because it's a significantly different revenue stream.
It's higher or lower?
No, it's going to be lower.
Lower, yeah.
Well, I just heard that the cost of the panels, which everybody's hanging their hat on, wasn't that significant, so.
Well, it's all comes out.
You fell same.
Recycling, the grant that the recycling...
Save yourself duly warned and cover yourself accordingly.
The recycling center, they got the grant for the compactor. There are two copies for the chair to sign if the board had authorized Tom to sign both copies. This is for the compactor at the recycling...
Recyclables.
They got a state grant for.
I move that the chair sign the copy of the new grant. Second for recycling?
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
We have a trailer permit right now in process.
Is that the one you were talking about?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, so what the situation was that Pam had fought, once we get notified by the billing inspector's office about a short-term trailer permit, Pam immediately sends out a note to the owner of the property, the person who's getting the trailer, and say, "Hey, just so you know, clock's ticking. You've got a certain amount of time to file for the long-term permit." The person did not come in at all during last week, which was not sort of a deadline, but, "Hey, please do it by this date." Pam followed up with a phone call. The person said that she's just overwhelmed with what's going on on her property because this was a fire situation. However, the firm that brought in the mobile home, let me correct Pam, is going to come into the...
Yeah, she's the guy that also has, that the permit is actually issued to...
Right. And they're planning on coming in tomorrow to try and start the ball rolling for the permit application.
Well, hopefully it gets straightened out. I mean, because she was in a tizzy, it was a sad thing that happened to her with the fire and everything, so hopefully it gets straightened out.
What I did today was I got the advice list form, so that's all ready to go. So then when he comes in tomorrow, he will pay for the advice list, and I will then give him the notice if he has to send the advice. You know, I'll give it to you through the website.
Great, okay. Let's see, Mr. Gardner's going to be in later tonight. Kimberly Mahoney, I don't know, I assume she's, we have the appointment, I will see whether she's come in. Okay. Elm Street, I'm still waiting from, hearing from the inspector general's office about whether we need to go through the formal bidding process for a transfer of the parcel to the state. On Ponton Pond Aluminum Sulfate Project, I talked to DEP and they are okay. The folks who provided the 319 funding for our original work and the money was going to be going to the design of the pump house, they've okayed a change in the grant.
The transfer of money off of the aluminum sulfur.
Right, so we should be able to go ahead this spring. I'm in the process of going out to bid for a dosing in late May, early June. We've got our folks for Franklin Street and the pilot there, they're on the agenda. Who's our 7:45?
We've already talked to one of them.
That's Davis Automotive.
Okay, so if we could get the Davis Automotive. The, I had talked to the treasure collector today. She said that in fact they've not received any payments additional, so now they're back to being foreign arrears. I think they're in arrears, but they're off the schedule of trying to bring it back. I'm recommending unfortunately that the board vote to revoke the license, but make it effective April 25th. That would give another two weeks for them to bring their account up to date in terms of the payment plan. Give me sufficient notice to send a letter to them just stating that, and then, you know, I'll see the board on the 24th, and if everything's better, the board can rescind its vote.
Hate doing that, but...
I do, too.
But fair is fair.
Very distasteful, but we have to be fair to the other taxpayers.
Yeah.
So move, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's see. Okay, so we're to Elm Street, on Ponton, they talked about pilots. Gasoline, diesel, fuel contract. Highway Survey recommends continuing this contract for the second of the one-year extension, so that would make it a total of three years to June 3rd of 2019. This is with, I don't know, I have that for someplace. This is with... Yes, Noonan, yeah. So if the board would vote to agree to extend it for an additional year, then we'll be going back out to bid in the spring of 19.
So move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And we'll Control Office recommend appointment of Noreen Callahan for another year term to expire on April 30th of 2019.
We got any reports, anything on her job performance, anything around that?
Just from you all.
We got any complaints from any dogs, the cats that have been treated?
Other than one dog, the complaint.
I move that we reappoint Noreen Callahan for a term to expire April 30th, 3019.
Second.
All those in favor?
All those in favor? I didn't know if he was going to change his motion from 3019.
2019, well, you know, I want to put it on there forever, so I figured if I put it today.
Okay. Summit Street Soccer Fields, Dick Steele said that he had no concerns with Halifax Soccer putting a floodlight over the parking lot, replacing the wood rail fence with a chain link fence and stoning the parking lot and placing concrete parking stops down the center. So I'd recommend that the board approve that and send a letter to Halifax Soccer and King the same.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
And I believe you have a 7:50?
Yes.
I don't know if this one is here or not.
Karen Mahoney?
Yeah.
Kim, Kim Mahoney?
No, Kimberly Mahoney, I'm sorry.
I know that we got a note from Kathy Drynan.
7:50. Yeah, that's what's according to your agenda.
Depending on who's awkward, you think? My watch is 7:52, that one is not quite 7:50.
Do you mind hanging out for a little bit in case she shows up? Thank you, Noreen.
Well, I'll just, well, probably because we're squeezing things in.
I need to talk to you.
So just, I had a report from, I believe it's Kathy Drynan. It's three cores fenced in, no cover, looking for a place to move to. I assume that's Miss Mahoney. Says the dog is attached at least at all times when out with Miss Mahoney.
Oh, we're going to have the hearing now?
Well, I'm, it's 7:50, I mean, I know that if she comes in, the board could take...
Okay, all right. I didn't know how it worked.
I left Charlie.
Well, I just didn't know if we were going to wait for her.
No, well, because I'm...
Okay, that's fine.
I mean, honestly, if she's out here, I'm not expecting her to be here. But well, you know, by all means, you know, I appreciate Noreen's patience and that the board can continue this and wait and then talk with Noreen.
And it's Ford's forward. How's the goal before we sleep?
Okay, the other things that are here, oh, Wage and Personnel Board, the other, next two are holdovers from two weeks ago, and I don't have anything more there. Wage and Personnel Board, Selectmen's representative, I'm recommending the board choose someone to fill the second seat on Wage and Personnel because Mr. Millius resigned his seat from Wage and Personnel last week. Before I think we can have...
Do I have a motion? Mr. Garen, do I have a motion?
I would, I would move that, I'm sorry, your name is?
Kim Roy.
Roy?
Are you sure you want to do it?
Mr. Kim Roy, be appointed to the Wage and Personnel Board.
I guess I'll have to second it.
I could second it.
Oh, okay.
I could second it.
Okay, that's fine.
I just can't make it.
Oh, okay.
All those in favor of Mrs. Roy, should she choose to take it on?
Yeah, that's fine.
Aye.
Aye.
If you choose to accept this mission.
Unanimous. Help this talk in 50 seconds.
Okay, and then the only other thing I have right now is good news, quarterly DUI reports from the state, no reports for Halifax restaurants from October 17th and October 18th.
Wow, wonderful thing.
Awesome.
I believe I have, hey, I have other stuff when we have the, we get to the appointments, but I don't have anything else, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's fine, but our hearing's up till eight o'clock, so we'll have to...
Do you want to do the dog hearing now?
Anybody show up?
I want to talk to Noreen. I'll take the AC, but...
Yeah, yeah, just because we're, we're...
Yeah. Okay, and goes with a gap in our schedule.
We're going to walk into their lights, bring them up low.
Anyone?
Oh, I think I'll be pretty clear.
How you feeling?
It's true. Troy's very hard.
That's because I don't feel I should yell when I'm talking to people who are...
And you don't lunge across the table.
He's very soft-spoken. That would be me. I'm a lunge.
Sometimes the whisper is louder than the shout.
Don't worry. I like to say that I'm a little spirited. I get a little spirited.
Yeah, you do.
I get a little spirited when somebody gets mauled, anyway.
Have you, have you had an opportunity to revisit the location?
Every time I'm walking, I...
Swing by, I mean?
I swing by, and this is the, when I was driving here this evening, that's the only time I saw a curtain outside of the residence, so I have not seen that dog. We have no reports of the dog being loose or any complaints about the dog, so I'm happy.
But we also have no verification that that dog is under the supervision of a trainer to work on its aggressive behavior. Maybe this is... Oh, hi.
Hi.
Come on in. Yeah, come on in the front. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to...
Where are we at since we last saw you?
I dropped the dog, licensed and vaccinated, but I haven't done the kennel. It's, it seems to be much, a big process, and not that I won't, but I'm not planning on staying there, like I said, and I've been doing nothing but looking for places to move to, so I was hoping that I already have someplace by now, but I don't yet. But I take her out, I'm the only one who takes her out now. I just take her out and I wait with her the whole time, and it's been working fine since she's been quarantined, so.
Just, just to be clear, we do have a kennel, but we just don't have it covered? Is that where we're at?
It's fenced on three sides, and the third side kind of leads into the rest of the backyard. It's kind of on the side yard, so it does completely block her from going towards the street, and she's on that chain. It's a...
But should she get off the chain, she could get out onto the street?
Not with me standing there.
No, no, but I mean...
If I left her outside.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear about where we were at, that's all.
Is the dog wearing a muzzle each time you bring her out?
In the daytime, yeah, not at night, just because at night she's just out and running again.
The, the...
What do you let her on?
What do I let her?
Yeah, what do you let her on? Because do you let her on the side yard or...
I take her with the leash of the front door to the side, clip her on the chain, and then I take, take her back and away.
Okay, okay.
This board had ordered that the muzzle be on the dog at all times when it was outside.
Right, yeah, like I said, the only reason why, she'll sit there and she'll try to pull at it while I take her out, so that at night, when there's nobody, like, in front, never going to be walking by, I just didn't think it's...
No, the dog should be wearing a muzzle at each time it is outside of your house.
It's just, it's, the only reason, like I said, it's just when she goes out, she'd rather mess with that than go to the bathroom, and then she ends up not going, and she'll wait, but I'll keep it on her at night, too, if you want.
That's what I wanted.
Well, I mean, these are the conditions that we set, and, you know, especially where you haven't met some of the conditions, this is a condition you can meet. I understand it's annoying to the dog, but what we're trying to do here is prevent having to go further and order something nobody really wants to order, and that's where we're at, and you've got to help us here.
I understand. It's just a matter of her, like, using the bathroom, she'll hesitate and wait until she just can't hold it anymore, and it's just...
But the sad part about it, Cam, is that even if you move to another location, and hopefully if you do, you'll make sure there's a secure place to put it in, but if the dog should get out again in another location and bites somebody else, then you get double the problem. Then the next move is to have the dog put down.
Right.
And you don't want to do that. That's why we're trying to give you the simplest process to follow, to prevent us having to go that last step.
I agree, I understand, I just, like I said, it's, if you were there with the dog, I think it would be a little bit different.
Yeah, no, see, the thing is, the dog's got to be trained to go to the bathroom with the muzzle on or anything else, because if it should get away from you, for some reason you slip, you let the chain go, the dog with the muzzle will bite somebody, then you become financially responsible, and you don't, you don't need another headache.
I agree, I, it was stupid on my part. I'll make sure it's on the other side.
And you're not stupid. You know, the concern for the dog is admirable, but right now, what we're trying to do is to keep from making that final decision, so please work with us.
Were you able to get any, any training for the, for the dog, or is that anything that is a possibility?
I, the last person that I spoke with about that was my boyfriend's friend, John. He said he, he's friends with a guy who worked for, I want to say five circles or something like that, and he was supposed to call him, and that was two weeks ago, and they stopped working together since then, so I just, I forgot about it, to be honest. I wasn't thinking of that.
I don't think you want me to speak tonight.
No.
I don't think you want me to speak, because when you came in here a month ago, we tried to explain to you how serious the situation, I'm sorry, it was over a month ago, correct? When was the date of the first hearing?
February 27th.
Okay, so on February 27th, we met with you, and we explained to you how serious the situation was, and as Troy explained to you, we could have easily made a motion to have the dog euthanized, but we wanted to give you the opportunity to prevent that from happening, and that included a few steps. To make sure that the kennel was secure, we recognized that there has been bad weather, so we can easily be a little lenient with you on that. To ensure that the dog has a muzzle on at all times that it leaves your house and when there are guests in the house that are not familiar with the... when there are guests in the house that are not familiar with the dog. Have you been adhering to that one? But you haven't been adhering to it 100%, because in your own words, you just admitted that it's kind of an inconvenience to do it at night.
It was...
Did you not just say that? Yes, you did. We also encouraged you to obtain a trainer to work with this dog, because it has shown such aggressive behavior, such aggressive behavior, that that was the reason that you gave us, that you had not had a rabies vaccination done on the dog or brought it to the vet, because you were nervous, in your own words, you said this, about bringing the dog around strangers and other dogs. So if you have a dog that is exhibiting those sorts of behaviors, we told you, in order to keep the dog alive, that you would need to get a plan in place to have the dog trained to work on the aggressive behavior.
I didn't know that part was mandatory. I thought it was... I didn't have a paper or anything saying, like, this is what you have to do. I thought it was...
Did you receive a letter from the board?
No, I didn't get any.
You never received a letter from the board, Lee, and what your responsibilities were with the dog?
I did send a letter, but I never received it back. I sent it from the very first...
Damn, while your folks are talking, I'll make a copy.
Okay, this is, um, let me just clear the first one.
We're trying to give you an opportunity, and as I said to you the first time that we met with you, this is a pretty aggressive dog. You have a lot going on in your life, and we wanted to give you the opportunity to be able to put the dog in a place that he could live among others. That hasn't happened.
Like I said, I didn't know that part was mandatory, but I've been trying to move, and that's the only thing that's been keeping me from doing anything, is just I've been... That's all my focus has been, I'm just trying to find a place.
Rentals are tough. They're tough in this area in bad times, never mind in good times. Finding a rental property is going to be a real process. I wish you good luck with that. But in the meantime, and to Kim's, to Mrs. Roy's rather, point about the weather's been pretty tough for everybody in terms of the kennel, and I understand that there's expense involved, and with the trainer, there's expense involved, but we can't go on indefinitely with this. I don't want to put this dog down. Just on principle. But if we have to do it, we have to do it. I'm inclined to give you a drop dead one week to get a letter from a trainer that says that trainer has been engaged by you to work with the dog. Somebody, not just a friend, but somebody who actually does this, and a commitment that you're going to get this kennel done within the next seven days or so. And if you can't do that, then we're going to have to do something drastic. I'm trying not to be hard here, but...
I also thought that I wasn't supposed to take her out of the house for four months, so that's... Four months is enough yet, so it's another thing that's been stopping me from making appointments, because the only thing that I was told that I could do was take her to the vet.
True. Okay.
True.
That's because she didn't have a rabies shot. That's why she's quarantined for so long.
I didn't know that was...
Yeah, if she had had a rabies shot, then she wouldn't be quarantined for so long.
Where are we at with that now? That...
We... As far as I know, it's going to be the first part of June.
That long, okay.
Yeah, so if you had been able to keep her up on her inoculations, and she bit a dog, I believe the normal quarantine period is 10 days. Am I wrong on that?
Correct. That's correct.
But because the dog was not, um, and, um...
Vaccinated.
Vaccinated, thank you. That's why...
Inoculated is what you're...
Yes. Thank you. That is why that period is longer. And to Tom's point, I mean, I don't particularly want to order the dog to be euthanized, but if I have to make that decision to protect the residents of Halifax, I will make that decision, and I won't take ownership of that responsibility. It would be your responsibility, because we gave you an opportunity, and you didn't do what we asked you to do. Again, as I said earlier, I understand the kennel thing. I totally get that. And we could be more lenient about that. But the fact that you sit here and say, you know, it's kind of inconvenient to have this muzzle on her at night, I would think that you would want to do everything that you could to be able to keep this dog alive. And I recognize that you have a lot going on in your life, and I said to you, you have a lot going on to have this responsibility of this dog being so aggressive. But we wanted to give you the opportunity to get the things that you need to get done in order to keep the dog. So I don't really know what we should do, because I feel like even if we gave you the date, I don't know that you could make it.
I take the responsibility of the dog, and that's... I take her outside myself, and I just... I know she won't take off with me, or... And that's the only reason why I didn't put them on at night, and I don't want you to put the dog down, so I don't...
Okay, we hit 8 o'clock, and I know this could continue on, because it seemed like we're going in a loop at this point in time.
So do you want...
You want to make a decision here?
Can I take her out of the house? If I can, I'll make the appointments tomorrow to have her seen by a trainer.
How do you feel about that?
Right now, she's on... She's on quarantine, but she is correct, all right? I do have a recommendation for a trainer who is very good with aggressive dogs. I can give you that as an option to look at one of these.
Do they go to the house, Noreen, so she doesn't have to bring the dog out?
I'm not really sure on how it goes, but they've had good success with it, and yeah, I would think they would be able to. Maybe that might help you out a little bit. But then, I'll give you this, it's a... Do you have access to the journal?
Yeah.
Hi. What I was going to suggest, rather than one week, maybe two weeks, to see what goes on, is if Miss Arjita can follow through with this.
I do want to commend you on one thing, though, your honesty. Because you could have told us that you did have the muzzle on at night.
No.
For that, I appreciate it.
I appreciate that, too, and I don't mean to be so difficult with you, but by... We have to be difficult, and we have to be strong about this, because if something else happens...
It's on...
It's on us.
That's on us.
I agree, I get that, too. And, um, like I said, it's just, it's not...
You're overwhelmed by your current situation, and for that, I feel sorry, really. I know you're overwhelmed, and I know you probably love the dog, but you're overwhelmed...
And the kids love the dog, and that whole emotional wrap-up.
It's difficult, I'm sure. And we don't mean to be difficult with you, but I feel like I have to be to get you moving on it.
I don't know. I just, well, I haven't done it, like I said, I just want to buy all the stuff and then have to take...
No, again, I'm not... I told you from the beginning, I'm understanding about the kennel. The thing that bothers me is the muzzle, and I do appreciate your honesty, but you should have been doing it. And the other thing is even making one phone call to talk to a trainer or something to help work with the issue of the aggression. That's why I'm upset.
You need to work with us so we can work with you.
Yes.
This is what this is coming down to.
I didn't know, I wasn't torturing, because I thought she was supposed to be, like, at home, not...
Yeah, well, I probably misspoke on that part, because I...
No, but trainers go to the house.
Right, all right, I'm going to...
Trainers can go to a house. I've had a trainer come to my house when I had a dog that I adopted, that I didn't realize was aggressive until I got him in the house.
And we appreciate the fact there's expense involved in this, but that's part of being the dog on it.
Yes.
And you took that on when you took the dog.
Right.
And unfortunately, you have to bear that burden, and I do feel for you. I understand, trying to find a place, take care of kids, work, take care of the dog. I get how overwhelming it can be to Mrs. Roy's point, but you're in for a penny, you're in for a pound, and I hate to use those old expressions, and you're in all the way here, you're going to have to do it.
Unless there's a...
I move that we allow two weeks' time for you to see the progress as far as training and kennel, doing the repair works, as the weather's supposed to be a little bit better over the next couple of weeks. Hopefully, spring will be here, and you'll be able to get a little sun.
Are you clear what's expected of you in the next two weeks?
And you now have the letter, because that was the thing that surprised me, because we always send a letter out, but we'll accept that you didn't receive it or didn't give it to the chain, so...
Your mail is screwed up.
But you have it now, so you know what to expect of it.
Unfortunately, the next time around is going to be a tough decision, and it's going to get made. So...
Yes.
The heat's on you, and I apologize for that, to the extent I need to apologize to you for it.
I will...
But we're going to do what we have to do.
And just before we finish, in two weeks, you guys meet again?
Yes.
On Tuesday. I work every Tuesday. If I get all this done, which I will, can I...
Then put it in writing or whatever.
Send it to the meeting?
We need to verify with the trainer that you've... So you need to send Noreen the trainer's name, so he... So she can verify that it's in place.
Yeah, yeah, that's probably the best thing to do, is contact Noreen if Noreen's okay with that. Thank you.
So do you guys...
So...
So you guys okay with the kennel? And it's the muzzle thing, and it's trying to stand your skin...
And the trainer.
Contact the trainer. Is that correct?
Okay.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So what we're going to do is we're going to... The muzzle has to be on all the time. And I remind you, when people come to the house, that dog has to have the muzzle on.
Yeah, she does.
And the training needs to be in place, and the kennel needs to be... Well, we'll wait on that.
Yeah, I think we can deal with the kennel.
Yeah. Because right now, it's still on strict quarantine.
Right, right. That's...
So, you know...
I lost track of that when I started in on the kennel.
Mm-hmm. So that's pretty good, if he can just... I'm really not sure of the cost, but, you know, if you have him, it's us or her.
Or someone else.
And we want a report.
That's just an option. That's not a requirement. I'm not requiring you...
To pick that person, yeah.
We're just trying to help with offering something.
Right. And they've had good success.
And in the report, and we're going to need a report on what they think the dog is assessed at, like, what kind... And how long it would need to be worked with in order to get it to a point where we wouldn't have to worry about the aggression. And the phone number, so that Noreen can call and verify that it's in place and the report is valid. Okay.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you, good luck. Yes.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Noreen.
Thank you, Noreen. All right, we're going to take our...
Oh, Noreen?
You can start with the solar panels.
Yeah, okay. We'll take our 8 o'clock appointment just a few minutes late. That would be Mr. Keith Akers on the Franklin Street Solar Array. Gentlemen, come on up.
Thank you. Also have with me Mike McConville, who was the original developer on the project as well.
McConville.
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, so thank you for making an appointment with us. I had sent a letter to Charlie, I guess it was on Monday, I think it was Friday. Really what I wanted to do is just get an overview of this project. As I pointed out in this brief kind of PBA, Mike had gotten a site plan approval from the planning board back in August of 2016, and we probably were in contact, maybe in the beginning of 2017. We had wanted to originally build this project under the former SREC 2 program.
It dried up, they got changed.
Exactly, so it was put on hold until the appropriate time, which is now upon us. So it felt like a good time now, especially with the articles that we proposed for the annual town meeting to kind of come back and reintroduce the project. And just, you know, we wanted to present to the board, answer any questions after Mike be, but most importantly, you know, our goal was to get on to the annual town meeting, with the articles made on there.
Logistics end of it, yeah.
And so we've been working with Holly over the assessor's office as well. I think on Monday or Tuesday, we sent her an information sheet, where she was asking about cost of the equipment, estimated revenues, because I believe, I guess it's my thing, she's probably going to put together her own Excel model to figure out what she thinks the appropriate pilot is going to be based on some of this.
Well, we've had some experience with pilot agreements.
Right, and Charlie sent me two of the ones, I believe, one was for the Sun Connect and another project. So, yeah, so those conversations are ongoing now, but the goal is trying to get at least a verbal agreement, if not a physical agreement in place ahead of the town meeting would be ideal, but I understand these things take time.
So we're placing it on the warrant...
We have two articles.
To negotiate and to potentially...
Right, so if we have everything done by May 14th in terms of an agreement for the pilot, what would happen is all this is informal, technically, in that what we would then do is go to town meeting on the 14th. Town meeting could vote to authorize the board's selectmen and board of assessors to negotiate the pilot. Ah ha, done, okay, well, we just happen to have this pilot right here, right now, it's all drawn up.
How quick is that?
Is the town interested, in fact, in approving this pilot? And we've done... We've gone through that process with both articles before at one town meeting, and council has said it's valid to do it that way. But, you know, obviously, the clock's ticking. We're now down to five weeks minus a day before town meeting. But at the very least, we'll have the authorization to do... To negotiate the pilot.
So, yeah, so over the next couple of weeks, I'm sure we'll be working closely with yourselves and/or Holly at the assessor's office, going back and forth and exchanging information. I think our attorney is going to look over the pilots that the town has previously approved, just to see if we have any question or comments about anything, because we would love to use the documents already approved, because that makes everyone's lives a whole lot easier. So that's our intention, but he might have some questions about some mechanics.
One of the things that you might want to investigate, you should talk to the building inspector, the building commissioner, in terms of fees for panels, because that may have changed since that original... That was negotiated. I'm just...
For building permit?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, because we haven't pulled the building permit.
No, I understand, but you might want to have that discussion sooner rather than later.
We appreciate that.
Who will be your representative? Are you the representative that we'll be dealing with?
Yes, yeah, directly with myself. Yeah, I would be your point of contact. I believe, at least all my info information, I know is in my email to Charlie, that I can present to the board as well.
I believe it's in the... I suspect it's in some of the documents, yeah.
But you have to take phone calls, emails, and answer whatever question.
What's the connectivity? Connectivity? Have you got three phases down on Franklin Street?
So we have to extend three phases.
Right, the single phase on Franklin.
Yeah, so that's what I thought, that's what I'm asking.
Reconstructing.
So we're paying national grid.
As well as the substational grid.
Wow.
Because that's what they had to do with that other field, I mean, it was about a mile, and it was quite pricey.
Right, it's not... It's national grid, so...
Yeah, 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 enough said.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, when you've got a monopoly on all the lines that run through the area, it's kind of hard to...
Right.
I'm doing like six of them.
You can't get past that.
Exactly. Everyone deals with this, deals with the same process, so it's not... We're not special, we're called out anyway.
Fair, firm, and consistent.
Yes, it is.
I'm dealing with EverSource in the middle of town and it's not a whole lot different.
Yeah.
They basically don't want it.
Yeah.
Because it's interrupt, it interrupts for them.
Correct.
Doesn't add a lot of value for the corporation.
Yeah, they're being forced to take it on, so...
Unfortunately, I was mentioning informally before the, to Mr. Garrett, that, you know, our company Sid Carver, we've done sixty megawatts of projects, we'll call it, and make it fifteen projects all throughout the Commonwealth. So we've dealt with national grid, we've dealt with NSTAR, now EverSource, we've dealt with WMECO as well, so it's not our first project, so fortunately...
So you've got the new kid on the block.
You've got the contacts, you know, you know the drill, you know what to expect, you know how to deal with it.
Exactly, we're gonna try to make this construction process and interconnection process as smooth as possible. And, I mean, you guys have dealt with other solar, so, you know, the construction process is not too disruptive for that few months and that's low touch, just the maintenance of the site and mowings.
How many panels will we target?
So right now it's, we got seven thousand, we're not gonna change.
Seven thousand eight.
Might come down if we get higher efficiency panels.
That might slightly change something.
Did a project in the other town, the first one I got involved with was twenty-four thousand panels and that went very quick.
Yeah, it does go like that, I mean, it'll probably take, I estimate it started in there's five months, which is probably more conservative, you might do it a little faster, but, yeah, it does go pretty, pretty quick.
The rack system's pretty, pretty basic.
Yep.
Drive it.
If we're constructing during the summer, fall months, it'll be fine.
Yeah.
It's the winter, then, probably not.
Yeah, winter's tough, you get a little frosty, you pound through that.
Yeah, so we're trying, we're gonna try, hopefully, this new solar program, Massachusetts, it's supposed to go quote unquote live, hopefully in July.
Now, my understanding was the Commonwealth's trying to restrict the size of projects, is that...
They did, well...
To individual, you know, I remember five megawatts being tossed around.
So that is the largest system you can build under the new program, but it's interesting, everything to date had been terms on DC side.
Yeah.
Now it's five megawatts.
AC.
I'm not sure why they switched it, they just did.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you that, because I think there was some...
Yeah.
A lot of people getting confused.
Well, makes for a larger DC project.
It does.
Right, right.
But it does make things confusing because it's calculated.
Yeah, right, right.
So, yeah, there is limit, this one is smaller, this one's smaller, it's about one point six seven megawatts AC, two point four DC. And a lot of that was because, once again, it was permanent, a while ago also there's wetlands around the area, so we're really working within a confined space.
Yeah, I'm seeing plans come in now, they're really spotty, you know, there's panels here, panels over there, panels there.
I mean, the solar has been around for so long that you don't really see many flat open fields you could really just go into now, you gotta work with what you are doing.
And that was the other question, I was gonna say, do you have to deforest there? Or is that...
We will have to clear.
Yeah, we'll have to clear.
Yep, it's probably eleven and a half, twelve acres, give or take.
But the entire parcel is sixty-one acres, which will be untouched.
No, no, I understand.
Yeah, so, I mean, they're really, I just, you know, appreciate the opportunity to come and talk about it, I'm sure we might be before you begin in two weeks or sometimes thereafter, but, you know, we continue to work with Holly and you, Charlie as well.
Well, what we'll try and do is leave a blank space open for May eighth, the board's meeting in two weeks, I don't know that we'll have, and if for some reason we've reached the point that we've gotten everything ready to go, then by all means, if I think it's more realistic, it's gonna be May eighth. But that's still before the main town meeting on the fourteenth. It's last minute, but if we're making progress, that's good.
Well, some of this is boilerplate, because it does take a ton of negotiating.
And more, I'm as curious, Charlie, if...
We may, we may have, there's no promises, no guarantees. But if we do have a fall town meeting, it'd actually be a very late summer town meeting, either last week of August or the first week of September would be my guess, simply because we wanna get the tax bills out on time, those need to be out by October first, there's several weeks of work that have to be done in preparation between actually physically printing the bills and stuffing in envelopes and such, but also getting all the check-offs from the state. So leaving enough time means that we need to do it, you know, around end of August, early September. So that's when, if we weren't able to get a contract done for the pilot by May fourteenth, but we were able to get something by then, then we'd have it on.
It can happen, it's just a matter of how much you wanna pick.
We offered zero, we thought you guys might have a problem with that, so we'll...
Boy, you mean, you wanna put an extra zero on the numbers you already had?
I don't see you sitting there anymore.
Yeah, so that was gonna be my question, Charlie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
You shouldn't, you shouldn't talk so much.
He's got a cover. I did all my talking during the permitting phase.
Now, which one is Keith?
Thank you, Mr. Maso. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Safe driving, because we do give tickets.
Yeah.
We do have an eight-three, but it's a hearing, so we've gotta wait until...
Yeah, we've gotta wait until eight-thirty, yeah.
Um, I did, I can briefly, the board are a couple of things. One, um, the reason I was able to say we didn't need the executive session, I got the last two check-offs from everybody, so, um, all, was it five? Five unions, I think, or four now? Fire, fire sergeants, patrol officers and highway, no dispatcher, so all four unions have signed off on a two percent increase across the board for them, and also fire police chiefs, um, and so that's all good. The articles were prepared for town meeting already with a sum of money, um, and, um, in the meantime, Sandy Nolan, the town accountant, had done the computations, and so the articles actually are presented with the sums of money in them for the town meeting more than rather just a sum of money. So we're in good stead for that.
Good to go.
Yeah. The, um, chapter ninety may be something we're gonna have to pass over. I had heard a report on the morning news that as much as the House had approved the $200 million allocation for chapter ninety, for some reason, I'm not actually, going into detail, I had other things to be doing in Plymouth today, but I was told, heard that it was a $600 million chapter ninety proposal in the Senate. Now, like I said, I'm not sure what happened, it's never been...
That high?
Yeah, three hundred, I mean, the MMA's been pushing for three hundred, I know that. And I don't know if this is three hundred times two years or what the, but given the difference there, I don't see the House and Senate coming quickly to...
Coming to a compromise on that, yeah.
So I suspect unfortunately we're gonna have to pass over that, I mean...
Well, that's probably because of the fact that all these bridges, half the bridges in the state need repairs and towns and roads on it, that might be why they jacked it up.
Well, we still have to find the money.
There's that too.
Well, I thought they already had it.
Well, they've got my money, I don't know what everybody else.
The warrant said, the warrant's going to press, it's already come back, Pam's working on the proof.
I did give you guys a copy of it all.
Thank you.
We do have the, all the articles for zoning went to the planning board, they'll have their hearing on May third. I believe, I have to actually ask, yeah, for the most part, the, I think almost all the articles, at least for the annual, the, um, for the most part, the finance committee's made recommendations, a lot of them won't show up on the warrant because, as I said, the morning went to press and they were continuing work last night. They won't be meeting this coming Monday because of the holiday, but they'll be meeting in two weeks from yesterday, because I know they haven't reviewed the special town meeting articles either, so they still have some work to get done.
So they're waiting for two weeks?
I don't think, I don't think they're meeting next Monday because of the holiday.
Oh, right, that's right, and you did tell them.
Well, why? It's just another day, isn't it?
Yeah.
I know, I show up, but, you know, I'll show up for whatever. Frank, is there anything else here? Nature and Point, we're doing, okay, um... I know, I'm just letting, trying to run the clock here so we get to eight-three, um...
Have you heard anything or have you reached out to Alan Diaz about the zoning?
I sent a note out to the boards and committees, I've not gotten anything back, I mean, Alan's been by, but I've gotten no reaction from ZBA or Plan, I'll check, I'll follow up.
Yeah, I've got a couple of phone calls on, on the in-law apartment, the zoning, whether that's a case or not.
That's good. It's a very convoluted issue and that has to be addressed with some serious effort.
Yeah.
Because there is no good way to address that.
Well, yeah, and I think, well, even the proposals that are there on the town meeting warrant are really Band-Aid solutions. I think there needs to be a serious discussion with the planning board and zoning board of appeals as to what we wanna do on the future of the in-laws, because in reality, if the idea is a real in-law apartment, which is not what we proposed in ninety-eight, because we're saying there needs to be a common space, there needs to be an opening between the two sections.
It's really an addition.
Yeah, um, and then if you say, okay, fine, well, it should be a separate, completely separate space, well, then what you got is a duplex or you got a two family or whatever you got, which are allowed by special permit already. So, I mean, there's maybe little reason, and thinking about it again, there may be little reason to...
Have an in-law apartment.
Violent, but...
I agree, and I think I was talking about that at the meeting, the problem now becomes if the...
How do you initiate it?
Yeah, or an enforcement nightmare.
Right, well, that's the other part, I mean, because we'll have previous in-law apartments that have been approved by special permit, how do we deal with those in the future that where there was a five-year term in essence for those special permits? I mean, I guess you could convert them somehow, but then you gotta construct a process to do that.
Get a clause in the Bible, that reverts them back or changes them to, but anyway, I'm just curious if any progress has been made into actually forming the zoning board.
Because I have a... The person that called me up was a little upset.
About...
Who the hell is gonna tell me what I can do inside my house?
Well, this is where it gets a little weird, because it's already there.
Yeah.
I mean, not to, not to make it, you know, to sound weird about what, we've already been telling this person what they can do with it.
Yes, well, that's what, that's my point, they're just now waking up to the fact that we were telling them what to do with it, yeah.
Well, I believe you reached your eight-thirty.
Yeah, I think we're at eight-thirty. So at eight-thirty, we're gonna hear from Mr. Warren Gardner concerning multiple unregistered vehicle permit. Mr. Gardner, come on up.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
And the most wonderful thing about a ticket is I'm the only one?
Have a seat.
Exactly. Oh, yeah, that was to let you know that I was in the building, in the historic district that we have this meeting. Okay, so that's yours, so that was just real, that's okay.
So, what are we doing?
Um, I guess I gotta drive by, I have too many unregistered vehicles in the ad, and...
This is, which, yeah, I was just...
Oh, sorry, industrial drive.
Okay.
Halifax.
Yep.
Said I had too many unregistered vehicles in there and stuff, and...
There's fifteen, sir?
Well, we can just put that on there, because sometimes I'll get a truck or two and some of my parts are obsolete on my older trucks, so that's why I have them there, like one just lost the engine and in the middle of switching the other.
Yeah, no, that's all right, you don't have to explain, I just want everybody to be aware that there's fifteen.
I don't even think there might, there might be less than fifteen.
But there may be fifteen at some point.
Right.
Okay, thank you, go ahead.
Your industrial property? Yes.
On the industrial property?
Yeah, I know, that's what I'm saying, industrial land.
I didn't mean to interrupt, I just wanted to verify there were fifteen, so you can go ahead.
So, um, yes, obviously I gotta organize it a little bit better than it has been right now, but this winter kinda gets crazy as well, moving stuff in and out of the garage, that's what I've worked on this moment.
What else are you doing in that building? Have you got, wasn't there a, somebody was doing some car repairs or something too?
I had a buddy of mine in there and...
Ford line auto body, as I recall.
Yeah, and being here, we're supposed to help one another, and that fellow part, so...
That never works.
I got stuck with a little, few extra vehicles and some I've gone out, and I'm in the process right now of actually taking it in sections to get it out of there.
I'm, I'm a little less concerned about an industrial property than I might about other, other zoning areas. But even having said that, I mean, we don't want a salvage yard.
No, we don't want junkyard.
I don't wanna junkyard, I just grab, sometimes I'll see a truck that's older and it will match mine, like I saw the, my engine was on its way out, so I salvaged it.
For parts.
Took the body off of that one for me.
And I took the body off the other one from my other truck.
You sold the other one already, that you took the body off, like we don't want it there.
So how many vehicles do you have on your property now?
Right now, probably total, probably maybe eight or ten, if that.
Now, that's the unwritten, oh, no. Are you using all these vehicles for your own purpose? Are you selling parts or what's going on?
No, I use a lot of them for myself and then whenever I don't need off of them, I junk, just get rid of it.
Can you... I don't know what you can store inside undercover, but, I mean, is it, is it because it's visible this became an issue?
I think that wasn't, my understanding is that somebody drove by, they're visible from the street and they changed it, what the, the way I received it was because with the hearings that we've had on licensed vehicles over the last couple of weeks, it's on the top of head for a lot of people.
Well, I know there was an issue out there a while back, years, years back, there was a lot of vehicles out back, there was some, I think it was that property, was there some, getting close to the, to the wetlands out there? There are some wetlands out in the back, right?
Yeah, I just got a primary body.
Well, that's considered, that's considered a wetland.
Oh, was it?
Yeah.
So I noticed in the file that the planning board recommends that we don't make a decision until the planning board can review.
Right, they were scheduled to meet last Thursday, they didn't have a forum, they were gonna be meeting this Thursday, they'd like to be able to comment on this.
If it'd been an industrial park, if he was selling the parts and stuff, I'd actually say, well, we need to look at a class too, like license.
Yeah, but at the same time, we don't wanna look, look at salvage yard.
Well, plus fifteen is a lot, like, that's a lot of cars.
I guess the question would be, I mean, what's, what's the purpose of the vehicles being there? In the sense of, are you selling the parts, are you selling the vehicles, or is this all your personal stuff, but then?
Some of it's, mostly it's all my personal stuff.
Okay.
And I bought them to, like rehab one, one other truck, I live near older trucks, and my parts are obsolete, so I have like two or three trucks of them.
Let me ask you this, what do you do with the older trucks, what's to rehab them?
I get rid of them to the junkyard after I take my parts off.
No, I'm saying, the ones that you rehab, what do you do with it?
Oh, and they go to work, I go to work with them, like I just put my freight line back on the road, I put them back in service.
That was the question I wanted to ask.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you got eight cars and they're, just like you have eight cars there and you're taking parts off of, what are you doing with the cars that you're rehabbing, I mean, are they still still on the property too, do you?
No, like, those are on the road, like the truck that...
Do you, do you want registered vehicles for the, for the winter months? Do you take?
I take them off in the winter months and...
And you might put a flower pickup truck on or a flower truck, so it's kind of...
That's why there's still some stuff left in the ad, because some of them might use for the winter, but not as well.
So how many total vehicles do you have then? Not the fifteen unregistered, but in a sense of how many working vehicles, because you're saying, I'm bringing this vehicle in, I'm taking some parts off of it, I'm putting them on one of my vehicles, and then after I've taken those parts off, the rest of the vehicle goes to the junkyard. So how many vehicles do you have that you're actually using, that you're bringing in to bring parts in for?
The ones that are on the road?
Unregistered vehicles.
I probably get about maybe seven rig trucks registered.
Okay, so to say, that makes more sense, you know, all I can visualize, you got one little truck.
No.
And every time a tire goes bad, you go get them, hold them on the tire.
No, no, not like that.
Well, you also...
You can't make a decision tonight.
Just to avoid any confusion, you also own the property over at the north end intersection Mount Potts and White Island Road?
No, no we don't.
You don't?
Well, it's a different garden.
That's why you see the hands now.
Okay, well, who owns that property?
I guess his daughter, my Aunt April and her husband, I guess.
Okay, so you're not...
Nothing to do with us.
Okay, you're not living there?
No, no, we live in Monroe.
Okay.
Oh, foreigners.
Yeah.
Because I recognize a name, that's where my confusion was.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, nothing to do with, with over there.
Well, based on the fact for, for me, based on the fact the planning board'd like an opportunity to review it, and to be honest with you, I'd like the chance to just drive by and take a look myself. I think we should shift this off.
I've been driving once, but it's been a while since I was...
I've actually cleaned the property up in the last couple of years.
How long have you been over there now?
Oh, fifteen, sixteen years.
Fifteen, sixteen, yeah, because you were down there when my daughter was down there with a hair salon.
I remember.
Going by, and I was going by the place, that's when I heard her saying that.
Kim, I don't know when, I know this sounds like it's off topic, is the dog park folks coming in, do you think, or are they?
No, so, um...
So I'm just looking at the agenda, that's all.
I do not believe they will be coming in, I can explain that to you after.
Okay, that's fine, we're, one, just, I'm asking is...
Find out what time.
Is what slot we can put you in for the twenty-fourth, so we could put you in for eight fifteen. Because that's when the dog park was gonna come in and now that opens up, and then that's when you all can come in.
Two weeks in, yeah?
Yeah, two weeks from now.
Yeah, two weeks from now.
And so what would be the longest time you'd have any of those unregistered vehicles? A specific vehicle that came in, what's the longest period of time any of them would be there for?
It all depends, probably a year or so, whatever, I'm, I just, I'm in the process of jumping on right now, and I just got the front ends and rear ends out of that, so.
They're pretty much in his way.
They're kind of in my way, I gotta.
So you're the only one that's doing the mechanical work?
By the way.
You're the only mechanic, or she's a mechanic.
She's a mechanic, no, I'm, I do my own stuff and I have friends.
So you don't have anybody else over there on the property doing it?
No.
Okay, nobody else's vehicles, all our vehicles over there are yours?
Yes, other than my cut-ins big dump truck that's there right now for the winter, and then.
Is that registered?
That'll be registered again, he does the same thing as I. They help one another.
Well, I think we could maybe resolve this at the next meeting and everybody has.
We'll continue to the 24th and 8:15.
You want to take the tour? Yeah, just take a look so I know what we're talking about rather than just hearsay, if that's all right with you.
Yeah.
We'll give you a call, at least I will.
That's fine.
Just take a walk, a couple of minutes.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay, so if the board would vote to continue the hearing to 8:15 on April 24th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
See you in two weeks.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Take care.
Bye-bye. So can I just give you a quick update on the dog park? So I went to the dog park meeting a couple of weeks ago, and they met with the people who created the Kingston one.
Oh, yeah.
And I think at that point, they realized before we bring an article forward, before they bring an article forward, that, you know, we get a plan in place, and like, where would it be, get all the stakeholders together so that we can talk about the different pros and cons to the location and fundraising, because they recognize that the town does not have the funds to support another thing in town.
That's going to require maintenance in addition to.
Yes, unless they are willing to do it. So they got some great ideas from the people of Kingston, so when I spoke with Sue Vog at that meeting, it was decided that, she wanted to pull the article, but because it was a petition article, it can't be pulled, so she'll pass over the article at town meeting, and after town meeting, when everything settles down, we'll set up a meeting, and I suggested that she invite, that we invite the park commissioners, because it's a park.
Yeah.
The water commissioners, because there's a couple of locations that they're interested in that may affect.
That might be sensitive to the Applewood Protection District.
Yes, exactly. Gosh, even the highway survey, because he would have to have a hand in, take care of it, using rec perhaps, so that we get, we all get in a room and talk about the pros and cons of the location, and really, it's a great idea, but whether or not, you know.
You're going to talk about who's going to maintain it?
Yes, because they recognize it cannot be with town funds, so.
We're not quite at 8:45.
It's not here.
Hopefully it'll work out.
So then we can bring Mr. Cook us, otherwise we'd be going home, I just, I just want you to know that, so that you understand.
Well, I did want to apologize for making you that late for my exciting presentation last time and not showing up, so.
Well, better be titillating.
Now, I'm, that's all back in time, so we're back to the last.
Look at a history.
In the wayback machine.
In the wayback machine.
Mr. Peabody.
Yeah, exactly.
It's nice to be around people that actually remember history. Charlie, just so you have it, my name is Brian Cook, I live in Duxbury, I'm an attorney, I largely grew up in Halifax and Waymouth, my family has had property on Crystal Lake, which originally was Muddy Pond, roughly the first real estate development in town.
That was smarter than to name it Muddy Pond, too, kept people out of there.
I thought it was wise. Somewhere around the 1920s, my grandmother acquired the land from a man named West, and there was some confusion with town council the first time we did this, because they felt there wasn't any deed, but we do have the actual deed. The Ponset Land Company used to take the land as if it were your table and cut it up like a checkerboard and sell these lots for vacation lots that people from Boston would buy and then never take.
They literally gave them out as door prices and sold it.
Really?
Exactly, yeah, it's a very interesting, back in those days when people didn't know where Halifax was. And so effectively what happened was my grandparents had been, had come back on a train seeing the ice pond, seeing them harvesting ice out of the pond and thought it would be interesting, and effectively bought the whole pond. At one point, they owned from that microphone all the way around the room to that can, but they didn't own between the can and the microphone. Somewhere around 1970, a guy named Bob Weston, or no, a guy named Wilcox.
Wilcox, yeah.
And took that property and put a cottage up on it without asking anyone's permission, and the cottage has been there for 50 years. No one lives in it, it's sort of just a dilapidated structure. Somewhere later in the process, my grandmother, who was getting older, lived to be 95, died in 1985, but would let lots go to taxes. The town would take the taxes or take the lots by tax title and then release them, and then take them again, and then release them, it was largely a way of saying, hey, you're going to lose this if you don't pay it, and people wouldn't pay it, so they'd just say, we don't want them, and then let them go. Somewhere in the history of all of this, a gentleman named Cousins checkerboarded a bunch of lots, Weston checkerboarded a bunch of lots, and Gervais checkerboarded a bunch of lots, which was basically effectively keeping anyone from putting together a buildable lot. So you've got 14, 15 acres over there, that was just what it has been was. Somewhere during the process, well, actually, jumping back just quickly, my grandmother for years paid taxes on property she didn't own, but Ruth Perkins would send her the bills and she would pay them, but never go to land court and actually put them in her name, but continue to pay. Somewhere, again, during that process, the town kept a number of the lots that they had taken by tax title and put them into town ownership. I've been bothering Mr. Seelig now for, let's see, when did I get out of law school, 30 something years ago, saying, this is the year I'm coming in and doing this, and every year I forget, or don't get to it. So we're at a point now where, I live in Duxbury, my brother's in Hanover, his kids are all over the place, and we'd like to actually come back and use the pond. We also found out that Bob Weston and his friends, who's a doctor from the Caribbean who finances him, want to take their land, which most of it is my grandmother's, and sell it and create lots down there, so I'm going to file in the next two weeks an action to acquire a title of the entire area and stop Mr. Weston in his tracks, and then hopefully talk to the town of Halifax about how we can take some of this effectively unusable land at present, make it usable, and put it back on the tax rolls. I wanted to come in to see you, because I didn't want you to feel that you were getting sued by this lawyer from another town, as you mentioned before, but I'd rather work with the town and see if we can come up with some way of either figuring out which lots were actually hers and which were, which were taken for taxes, that we could pay the taxes and get them back, and which, if we need, you know, another 40 feet that might be town land, that we might be able to acquire from the town. We're more than happy to have discussion with the town about creating, I don't know what the number would be, but 25% of whatever we can develop and make it low income or make it available to police, fire, and teachers in the town of Halifax on a preference basis. We're not sure how many lots can be built over there, we know there are going to be issues.
With accessibility.
Accessibility is actually a funny question, because there were all these paper streets there for years, and if this, if I'm the pond, there's a road right here, but that railroad is where you're sitting.
Yes.
But people use this one.
Yes.
So we've got to figure out where the actual roads are, figure out if they've been abandoned and so on and so forth. In my own stupidity, I was over there one night and working on a dock and locked my keys in the car, and wound up having a hook and ladder truck from Pembroke come, but you'll like the story more than these three guys will, where the fireman driving the truck said, I can't get in there, and the woman with him said, get out of the way, and she jumped in the front seat, drove the truck all the way around the pond, unlocked my car and left, while he said, he said, it's a new world. But anyway, the road is wide enough to pass and repass, the question is whether it's in the right place, and we're happy to spend the time and money putting it in the right place and making it, not necessarily a caved road with curbs, but something that the town can live with. If we have to go the rest of the route, we're certainly happy to do whatever the town wants. Our end goal really is to get one buildable lot on there that we can put a family cottage on, and if we came up with two or three others, we're happy to sell them off and to create a real community over there rather than kind of no man's land. For years, because that pond area, as kids, we thought it was great to put one foot in Halifax and one in Pembroke, and literally, Pembroke's been developed and Halifax hasn't. My grandmother owned the street that's there, I think it's Thompson Street, and Roland Leary picked that up and taxed title at one point and put houses in back in the 70s. But the long and the short of it, and I'm not saying this to win your sympathy, but my dad, who was 94, passed away yesterday morning, and this was always sort of a dream of his, so I think my brother and I feel that.
Something you could put together.
Let's get back to the pond. Now that the kids are around, it certainly makes it more attractive. Clearly, the drain has made a huge difference.
Big time.
Land that didn't exist, and you should all be very proud of yourselves, because in meetings that I've had with the redevelopment authority in Boston and other places, they talked about how Halifax had the highest escalation of property values of any place in the state, when the drain came in, I don't know if it's still in that direction, but it's certainly something to be.
So sorry.
So, well, really, that's the problem, we have that issue on the other side, too, that's a tax issue. So I just wanted to kind of introduce myself, reacquaint you with this issue, figure out who I should be asking questions of.
I can offer some suggestions.
Certainly.
I mean, the planning board is an obvious place, but in addition to that, I would consult with the fire chief, because the regulations for access roads has changed over the last four or five years.
Excuse this question, you have a full-time fire department?
Yes.
And.
Jason Viveras is our fire chief.
And they would handle that side of the pond, obviously the Halifax side, not anything in Pembroke.
Unless they were asked.
Unless they were asked for mutual aid.
Right, and so in this case, I think every parcel that I'm talking about is Halifax.
Yeah, but the access road's going to be Pembroke, so you're going to need to deal with Pembroke and that access road as well.
That's why I was asking the question.
I mean, there's all new regulations with fire access roads, and the authority having jurisdiction has some leeway, but clearly it's that person's, which would be the fire chief.
Okay.
And obviously the building inspector.
Yeah, okay. And is there a, once I do all my homework and get everything organized, is there a way of submitting it to you to then have it submitted to town council, rather than filing some action and asking town council to respond?
All right, now, what are you talking about specifically, the suit, or the action to?
To acquire a title.
To acquire a title.
Some of it's going to be Charlie Cousins, who's in Front Row, Colorado, who stole this, I don't want it, you can have it if you pay the taxes.
I've actually spoken to him a few times.
Right, we're obviously going to have to pay the taxes on that, we'll have issues with, probably with Weston and his group, and we may have to talk to the town about plans that were required at one point, to figure out if you've got plans for them, or whether that might be something that might be helpful.
I'm sure we're open to any discussion.
No, I didn't want to waste your time, but I'd rather talk to you than have you get a letter in the mail from a lawyer or something.
Has he talked to Harvey?
I think that's further down the road, in terms of anything to do with assessments, I think you're going to have to establish what was taken, when it was taken.
Well, they would have the maps.
The inventory, I mean, the treasurer's office should have that information.
Yeah, they've been wonderful. I was here a couple of weeks ago and they gave me everything before the day was out, after I came back and got it. I've kind of done all kinds of colorations and I'll figure it out and become a little smarter.
Yeah, it's going to be, that would be a challenge. I've had enough experience up there to know, we had a cottage burn at one time.
Right.
Trying to relocate it, found out it was on the road, you know.
Yeah, in the middle of the road.
Yeah, in the middle of the road.
And my brother maintains that all my father and his brothers have left the syrup just so they don't have to deal with this anymore, and figure that out. Good, so again, I don't want to take a whole lot of time, just wanted you to know, is it all right if I do anything right, or just send it through, Charlie?
Certainly you could do that, I don't want to do that, I don't know.
And whatever.
It doesn't legal bind us.
No, no, that's fine.
Just for FYI. FYI, what's going on.
And I'll just, I'll pass along to anybody who I think needs to see it.
That would be wonderful.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's reasonable enough, I don't have any problems with it.
Thank you.
Well, tell everybody in Pembroke I said hi.
I don't do that.
Do you know Mr. Hanley over there?
Well, just so you know how it works over there, I was over at the veterans office and the housing office, and we were having a discussion about Pembroke, and he handed me a document for a, I don't know if it was, I don't know what it was, but some sort of development for Halifax, and I said, do you do this a lot? So I'm not sure if there's, whether they handle both towns or not, but.
Well, John McEwen, the Halifax Housing Authority has a contract for services with Pembroke.
Well, that makes sense, I didn't know if he was just trying to get me out the door.
Well, it could have been.
It could have been that, too.
Do you know Greg Hanley over there?
Yeah.
He's a good friend.
They're good people, so, as I say, we've been coming here forever, so we've got to keep bothering you.
Well, it's not a bother, as long as you don't try to get something from us.
Exactly. Good, thank you. Any questions?
Sorry for your loss.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
I know, it's, it's an interesting event, because obviously, we'd love to have kept them around for another 95 years, but dying in your sleep at 95 is about as good as it gets.
Yeah.
I just put my 97-year-old mother into a nursing home.
Yeah, that's what we tried.
And I wish for her every day that she quietly goes to sleep.
Yeah, my grandmother basically said that I'm not going to the nursing home, she didn't. I don't know if we have that power anymore.
Well, you can, you can stretch it out as far as you can, and then you're, then you're out of options.
That's right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, have a good night.
Thank you, Brian.
Safe drive home, it's a long drive to Pembroke.
Thank you, I tried to drive slowly, because I heard you.
We do give tickets.
Well, you have to pay for things with her.
Do we have anything else?
I have nothing else.
Can we do anything?
No, 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 no.
You don't have anything?
I most have any here.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. We are adjourned, thank you for joining us, good night.